Six o'clock. We got it rolling. Alright, six o'clock. Call the meeting to order for the February twenty-four, twenty twenty-five planning commission agenda for Chapel Hill. Looks like we have a call and I believe everyone is here. Definitely have a call. Minutes for last month, has anybody looked at them? Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Knox, do I have a second? You got a second? Two or minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, do we have any public comments?
Yes, um, there was a comment on the agenda for Porton Highway and I'm the realtor for the loads and they have some concerns about um, passing the variance for that property.
Okay, uh, question for the board, do y'all want to hear their public comments now or just wait till that agenda item comes up for any discussion? Here over there. Okay.
Um, I guess, like, what's the, like, what are your intentions and what's the variance for that?
For? For the five sixteen North Porton Highway.
What is the, what is the reason for the variance? So that I can control the road, um, so that if we want to make it, um, uh, if, 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 uh, the bats control the road, then it doesn't, um, then it doesn't, then, you know, there's no, it can never be a public road if it needs to be.
So, in order to divide off the house and separate the land, is that not a very flagrant?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure, maybe that I'm on the same page, we, we've got a subdivision plat.
Yes.
That there's not, this is not a BCA meeting, we're not, we don't have a variance before the planning commission, we're just reviewing the plat that's been submitted.
Okay.
And it shows an easement, but, again, there's not a, there's not a variance request or a vote on anything like that.
So this is just for discussion?
Well, well, it's for, it's a plat review.
It says final plat review, don't you think? So if it's final plat review, then that means that in order to pass it, you have to have a variance in our own.
I, I, I don't think it needs the current.
It may, yeah, it may require a variance, but that's not something that's going to be voted on tonight because we, that would be a BCA meeting, as you know, it'd be a BCA meeting. We have notice and a public hearing on that, so this, we're, the planning commission is just considering the plat that's submitted and that may be one issue regarding that easement, road issue.
I, I would, I would suggest if y'all have further comments about the agenda item concerns other than what you've said, go ahead and get that out now and then when we bring the agenda item up to the applicant and the commission.
So the concern is they have their home for sale and if you separate that off, then you could say today you're going to build a subdivision, but it also could be you don't do anything with it and it's there two or three years and they maybe don't sell their house and you put something commercial there and it will affect their property value.
So then maybe it'd be advantageous to wait because we're addressing all that, wait till it comes up because it's in the.
Is that okay, Todd?
It, it's up to y'all, I mean, generally I think you want to have public comment and then have the discussion on the agenda item debated, but it's up to y'all however you want to handle it.
So just as a, as a courtesy, uh, if you have any further comments, you can make them now, but as a courtesy, if you do have a question about anything we discuss when that agenda item comes up, I, I feel it would be appropriate to give you a chance to answer any further questions or concerns you have when we discuss it, is that okay?
Yeah.
Was there any other direct comments you were going to make at this time?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
Sharon, Deckard.
So, and your intention is to purchase the land?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I'm sorry.
Nope, no problem.
Okay, any other public comments regarding anything else?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm Hannah Pearson, I live on Maple Street, um, I just have some questions and concerns, um, I know you guys have all seen the Facebook comments and there are a lot of people that can't be here during this time because of their jobs or whatever, so I compiled a couple of questions that I would love if you guys could start thinking about them and maybe start planning on answering some of them. Um, so with the new subdivision, um, there are several concerns, legitimate concerns that have been raised and they've all been joked off, um, one being the traffic, so the roads, you know, if you do, you know, you said you've mentioned closing the underpass, um, that, that could be a huge issue. Um, the roads with that much population on it, what are y'all's plans to increase, you know, to, to widen the roads maybe, or traffic concerns with those roads? Um, are any roads scheduled for widening or improvements to accommodate the new volume?
Miss Chris, I, I'm confused, which neighborhood are you speaking of now?
The, the, the one underneath the underpass where everyone's been asking questions like what's.
Cause I'm not on Facebook and I haven't seen comments, I'm kind of lost here.
Okay, there are several sitting around that have, so there are concerns with the, the, you know, the subdivision isn't getting done today, right? So as you guys are planning for all of, you know, this and you guys have already approved it, so what as the planning commission are you guys planning to do to widen the roads to accommodate seven hundred houses? And the cars that go along with that? Um, I appreciate that a couple of people have gone to the school board meetings about increasing, you know, getting, you know, our schools increased, but like questions have been asked about, you know, what are our plans to help accommodate this and trying, people want to know what are we doing, what are we going to do and not just wait until, oh, it's already here. Now we have to deal with it, we don't want to be another Spring Hill where it's a two-lane road, right?
Exactly.
So, when asked about it, it's, you know, just be thankful we're getting all these new houses, we're gonna, you know, have more stuff. But what about us as, you know, citizens that already live here that are worried about the underpass and the increased traffic, the increased children in our schools, our schools are already packed. Like, I know a couple of people have gone to the school board, but they're not ready to vote on that. So I just would like for the planning commission to maybe think about addressing some concerns that have been addressed instead of making fun of people for asking questions or laughing it off.
Uh, that's your number, isn't it?
Hmm?
Sure. Do you mind if, if I speak?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Miss Pearson, uh, I think in, in many other conversations and what I've been gribby to and what I have had, I understand that Mr. Knox is, is willing to do a lot of stuff, to do some stuff, plan on this, plan on that, I can't speak on his behalf because I'm not him. But some of these concerns that what you are bringing forward is something that what we have discussed in the past, and I'm sorry that if there's not.
It's just the minutes don't really detail anything. So.
I'm sorry that there's not been any communication.
Yeah, it.
To you all.
Well, it's, you know, it's not just me, it's.
Sure, well, I mean, it's you, you all, you're the citizens, you're, you're, you're who we work for, and we, we're supposed to, to govern and, and help our citizens, um, I don't know if Mr. Knox will want to speak on behalf of that, to answer any more of your questions, but from my understanding, he is willing to, to do what he needs to do to make things right.
But I mean, he can't widen roads, like, he's not going to widen on a road.
He can't do, he can't do anything without that space and, and.
But do you guys have any plans for that?
Uh, so, Miss Pearson, I'll, I'll speak briefly, the, uh, I know there's a lot of chatter going around and there was a conceptual plan for a whole lot of houses, the only thing that the city of Chapel Hill Planning Commission has granted approval on is phase one, which I believe is seventy, is that right? So the only thing that there has been a permission granted on by preliminary, preliminary plat approval is the first seventy lots. And after that, any further plat, at the moment in time that a preliminary plat comes in for more lots than that, these items can be discussed as other phases of the subdivision come in, but at this time, the only impact, the only direct impact that the city's got to deal with right now is the first seventy lots because that's all that's approved. Uh, and, and I know I've had people call me about stuff they've seen on Facebook and stuff they've heard and we have not granted approval for seven, eight, nine hundred houses on a, any type of guaranteed approval on a plat, all that is is a concept and conceptually, you know, a whole lot of houses could go all over the city, uh, that's, that's the only thing that a whole cluster of homes and townhomes were shown on a plat, that was a concept plan which is not any type of official approval. That's something that was put together, I believe, for the original annexation of the property is where that concept plan was put together, but the only thing that there is approval on at this time is, is, uh, the first seventy homes, that's it.
And the underpass issue, I think we've, we've spoken on that a year, year and a half ago with, uh, Mr. Bingham as well as, uh, T dot and CSX, wasn't it? That's right, so I don't know where we stand with that right now. Um, but I don't think that it would be closed, but again, if the state and CSX can figure out a solution, ideally I would love for it to be a bridge, a crossroad, instead of that low line area there.
Right, because it floods.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, okay.
So do we have any other public comments? I see some folks just walked in, do we have any other public comments?
Well, it's good to think I brought up and I think that.
Uh, can you state your name and address?
Amanda Evanson.
Okay.
I am glad that the questions have been raised. Oh, twenty-two sixty-nine Crusher Road.
Okay.
Crusher.
Crusher.
I think to get information out there would, I love the sound and I love the unity, I've been here for twenty-seven years. Um, I think if some information was put out, volunteered on a concise basis, mainly about like what you just stated, would help alleviate some of that, uh, citizens' anx- anxiety, um, instead of just to be directed to minutes, which I've, you know, gone back to the minutes and they're not very descriptive either, um, I feel like the citizens have a lot of faith in you all that you're doing the best to town, you all live here too, um, and, uh, if there was some, like I said, some concise information to go out to the public about that, it would help to answer.
And I, I, I believe our city staff, when people do come in and ask for information, I think our city staff has done a really good job providing information, plats and answering questions when questions come in. And I know the minutes a lot of times just reference a plat number or a plat name and people may not know what's on that plat.
Unfortunately, we don't, you know, I mean, we have a newspaper, but people do turn to Facebook, unfortunately, I mean, that's where people get their news and, uh.
That's sometimes true information is not possible.
But I think that, uh, I mean, some people are replying and you all have an opportunity to set the record straight or at least.
I, I, I don't think we really can on Facebook when it's. I, I, I'll let Todd, our legal counsel, answer that question, but I, I think we've got to be careful outside of the public meeting to chime in and state facts on a social media platform, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I mean, you certainly can comment on Facebook and other social media if you want, but it's, it's probably not the best way to communicate public information generally, instead of the town's website and, um.
And public media.
Yeah.
Well, a town has a page.
What if you guys did a public notice and posted it?
So we do, e- e- every time we have a planning commission meeting, we publish the agenda and, and like tonight.
But to address it, to just say what you just said, because that's not going to be in the minutes, those words that you said, they're not going to be everything and so maybe it would be a good idea to release a statement clarifying and, you know, I, I think it would be, you know, it would put some more trust back into it and some rumors to rest or questions to rest potentially, I think you guys should really think about it.
Or for example, I'm here recording.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Because you guys record but you don't post it any longer.
Their public record, you can ask for them any.
I under, I understand that, but you're going to have every single resident come up here, Nathan Pearson.
Nathan, okay.
Like, I'm recording it so the public can see. You're recording it and not posting it, which ended in what, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, maybe twenty twenty? You used to, I mean, you're recording the, the meetings, why don't you post them to YouTube again?
The main purpose we record is to, is for our records.
It just becomes a record, it's, there's no requirement to post it.
I understand it's not a requirement.
But for clarity and transparency.
To the public.
It might be beneficial.
To return to posting these.
I think that was, uh, did it end during COVID?
It ended after COVID.
We started doing it during COVID because people, people felt uncomfortable to attend a public meeting.
Well, they still feel uncomfortable to come here.
Because you get ridiculed.
Because of what, ma'am?
Ridicule.
Ridicule?
Mm-hmm.
From, from the city?
Members on the board.
Members of the board.
Okay. I, I, I apologize on behalf of Chapel Hill, anyone would feel that they've been ridiculed by this board, uh, I just can offer my apology. Do we have any other public comments regarding anything? Or any input at all from the public? Okay. Thank y'all, uh, moving forward to new business, uh, tonight's agenda, we have one item for new business and that is consideration to approve or deny the Bat subdivision lot one, final plat, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, for property located five one six North Horton Parkway, Chapel Hill, Tennessee, tax ID number zero two one G group A, parcel number forty-five. Sean.
So, I want to, so what I'm, I'm proposing is that.
It's, just before we start, I just clarify that you're the applicant on this.
Correct.
And then for purposes of this discussion and any better presumably, you're going to refuse yourself.
Absolutely, absolutely, um, so I am proposing this, Sean Deckard, and, um, so what this is, is for a current, uh, current resident, it's my grandmother, uh, she would like to, um, uh, get rid of the property, uh, so I am proposing buying it, I understand that purchasing it uh, would grant an additional easement onto the property, I am wanting to forego that easement and, uh, put it on the plat that no additional easements are granted for that property so that only, uh, my grandmother and the two residents, uh, back left and back right, which, you're back left, so that, um, so no additional easements could be granted, so that it doesn't change. Um, I'm, I'm proposing to buy it and leave it alone, I have, um, gone, um, to, um, the, the deed office, um, to try to find out and make sure that there are no encroachments on the property, that everything is currently done correctly with the property. It, it has been, it is, there are no encroachments, that the three easements that are granted for, um, five sixteen A, five sixteen and five fourteen are all documented, so no undocumented easements or encroachments as they would be at that point, um, and I would like to put on the plat, um, that, um, there are no additional easements, um, I'm just trying to basically change ownership, I don't want to change anything that currently is, it's, we're not changing lines, we're not changing who can access the property, we're not changing. I literally want to own the driveway and that's what the variance is for, is to own the driveway so that in the future, if we wanted to make it a public road, I have the ability to do so.
So it's not a minor plat revision with the house already on the parcel, you're not dividing off the house?
Uh, so, so the, the way I interpret the plat, and we've looked at this at times in the past, not for approval, but for discussion, it does look like lot one is being split off of Mrs. Bat's whole property. And because the remaining portion of property is not shown on the plat, I assume that means it's over five acres and that would need to be stated. Like, that would have to be documented because it is.
Yep.
If the remaining portion of property is under five acres, it has to be numbered, it would have to be numbered lot on the plat, uh, but it's my understanding he's, that Sean's desire is to split off Mrs. Bat's house to continue using the driveway and then he owns the remainder of the property to the south, but he would own the fifty-foot prob, the fifty-foot underlying property underneath the existing fifty-foot, any progress he can make. In, instead of, if Ms. Bat owned it, it would be a flat lot, right now it's in, it's an easement lot, which is non-conforming and don't meet our regs, so if we did not advertise for a variance, I believe at best we can discuss this tonight, we can table it, it would be, I believe, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we can grant a variance if we didn't advertise that we were having a BCA meeting.
That's correct, right, yeah, and, and I guess the other issues that were brought up, you know, namely, any restrictions or other things that you would propose to put it on the plat regarding its use would also need to be, I think, on, on the plat before it's.
And that's, and that's what I want to do, um, so the gentleman, uh, Mr.
Mr. Reese?
No, the, uh.
Bingham.
Mr. Bingham, so, yeah, so we, uh, so, so that was brought up? Yeah, yeah, other, other survey, Mr. Bingham, so that's, that's what I want to put on the plat, I, I want to make it is, um, it's not going to change, it's not going to be, I, I don't want to put a bunch of houses right there. That's why I thought it would be most advantageous to say that even myself is not granted as, as a user or as, as an easement, like, I want to make it as transparent as possible and say that even I don't have an easement, I just want to control it so that I have control over.
So, so I, I think for tonight, ma'am, Stacey, I'll give you the chance to be here and say something for tonight. If the approval is going to, if, if the, if the plat right now does not meet our subdivision regulations, if we voted on it, we would have to deny.
Hmm.
If we do, if you are requesting a variance, I think the best case scenario, we will, we're going to have to table the plat for a month and get back on the agenda for a BCA meeting for the variance.
Sorry.
And then if the variance is approved, if, or approve the variance, then we could, uh, look at approving the plat, but without, if the plat doesn't meet our current regs, we cannot approve the plat without.
And, and just to clarify, I mean, it's, it's not about, this violation not only of subdivision regulations, but the zoning ordinance that requires you to have road frontage for a lot, um, and not to have more than one property accessing a private easement. So there's a, there's more than one issue just with respect to the easement there, and I don't know whether Steve, is, is there a subject issue?
Well, so, so Donnie, Donnie, Donnie believes that the house is on city sewer. Hey, between now and next month, if we press forward with this, I think that would have to be confirmed.
Okay.
By, by camera, maybe you have to camera the line.
Okay.
Prove the line.
Yeah.
Find records, but.
We're on subject, we're on subject.
Y'all are on.
Yeah, we knew the two in the back.
Yeah, this, this home, if the home was there in nineteen eighty-six, it is possible that the house in front of you was put on sewer when they ran the sewer lines in eighty-six, eighty-seven, but I don't think your house was there in eighty-six or eighty-seven, it was mid-nineties. Uh, maybe, maybe, maybe. But yeah, there's a, a handful of things I think that Steve still needed some direction on.
So you're saying that with regards to the, um, the easement and it being over one, well, there's already three, so.
Right.
So we're not changing anything that are, isn't currently already?
No, you're, you're creating a new lot that doesn't currently exist, we can't do anything about the non-conformity that's there currently, but, but this would be essentially, you know, an, an endorsement of a non-conforming property in violation of the ordinance, um, so I, I don't know, I'm not sure what the basis for a variance would be for this, but again, I don't, I don't want to prejudge if that's your, you know.
So basically you're coming straight down this way, then what happens to all of this?
No, 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 I'm, I'm, everything.
You what?
All of it.
That's correct, that's, that's how it.
Well, it looks like on this thing, it's just saying like you're doing something like this.
Yeah, right here. So he's splitting that off.
That, basically, it's like, it's like.
If, and the, and the plat doesn't show it, but if the remaining portion of property is over five acres, it doesn't necessarily have to be shown as a numbered lot, I think it would, I think, I think the acres would have to be stated on the plat, correct? Is that correct, Steve?
What I would suggest is that lot probably needs to be shown so who.
Show the entire lot.
If, if that's, if the easement is on that lot, then it needs to be shown.
Yeah. Uh, Sean, sorry, you got that?
Sir.
Because the easement is on the remaining portion of property, that whole property needs to be shown on the plat.
Okay, and that would be done through Mr. Bingham?
And that would be your survey.
And that is what, so that's what I, it was kind of a dice roll because like, I knew that and I called him about that and he said, um, I had to look at the guy's name, the gentleman I spoke with that said he was ill and he said, you know, take it to the board, get an answer and then roughly, you'll know back then. Um, um, you'll know what they want, you know, it was, he said they may, you know, so I, I, I attempted that, but I guess he's ill and is not doing certain things at the moment.
And Plainview Drive and Battle Road, or actually the roads, these houses actually have National Highway.
They have a.
Port, Highway address?
That's correct.
So that, well, I'm saying that would throw me a grove because you say Battle Road or Pleasant View, then I think we did some work or whatever at this house, so there's actually two roads off of Pleasant View, not counting back there and here, so.
Sean, yeah. Uh, Stacey, you have a question?
I, I think Todd addressed most of it, it was just asking like, want to identify what the variance is for and what the basis is of it.
And, and Sean, Nick.
Also, I want it stated for the record, like, I appreciate that you say nothing's going to change, but the reality is you don't know how long you're going to hold the property or have the property or who's going to have it after, and things do change and it can impact value of their property.
But i- if, if it's put on a plat, it can be, if I was to.
Yeah, but you could build whatever you want, it's commercial, so you could build a gas station in front of their house and.
But I could still do that if I didn't get the variance.
You can if you buy the whole property.
I can do it without buying the whole property, I still have plenty of road frontage.
You'd have to divide.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'd still have to decide at some point.
Right.
Yeah, but, but, but owning, beating the variance on that right there doesn't limit my ability to put something there if I wanted to.
Uh, so just for informational purposes, if you press forward with the variance next month.
But I don't want to.
The, the main thing this body's looking for for a variance is a legitimate reason and a legitimate reason cannot be a desire or money related, there has to be a, a physical hardship on the property. Uh, top tide, there's three or four specific things that are legitimate grounds for a variance.
Right.
But, you know, floodplain, floodplain is what, if you're doing reducing a lot size or reducing a centac kilo structure out of floodplain, you know, that's always sixteen feet favorable reading for a variance, uh, a physical characteristic of the property, if you have a blow up or a clear, uh, a sinkhole, you know, keep instructions off of those things would, would be good grounds. I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what your grounds would be, but that, that would be the main thing to grant a variance is it would have to be stated as part of the motion, what the grounds, the reasoning why we would, you know, prove the grounds would have to be stated and that would weigh in on whether it's favorable or not.
I just have one small question, so if you were to table it today and the BCA meeting, like, is that providing, that would be at the next planning commission meeting?
It'll be right, right ahead of the planning commission.
And it'll be ahead of the planning commission meeting, right?
If I table this, this would just run with the next meeting.
Right, and then that has to be advertised?
Correct. Apparently, I have a hearing for it, we could board that, so.
I just want to make sure we understand the process.
And, and if.
And, and that's something the applicant has to initiate, the specific request for variance, not just a review of the plat. And, and I would suggest, or I, you talked to you, of course, but, um, maybe withdrawing the plat submission, so then the board won't have to take any, a vote on with respect to it tonight or, or table. I couldn't remember, it seemed like it was.
I think it had sixty days.
Tabled the last time because, or just denied the last time because of the.
I think it was withdrawn, is that correct?
It was withdrawn because of the, because of the bonus.
Mortuary.
Mortuary.
It was withdrawn last time, so I don't think it's.
Correct.
The clock's not ticking on any type of approval right now.
The BCA is public also, right?
Uh.
So you need a motion to table till next month?
Or, 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 or the applicant can voluntarily withdraw the plat off the agenda.
Okay.
But, this is the first document that everybody's got to have to clarify for life.
And between now and next month, if we could get better resolution on, on Steve's comments, you know, if you're, if you're a surveyor. And between now and next month, if we could get better resolution on, on Steve's comments, you know, if your, if your surveyor engineer can work with Steve to get, you know, an, you know, an adequate answer or comment or reason for everything he listed here, that, that would be helpful as well, because we do already have that, so.
Okay.
But we, we do been, have a couple of different options, the applicant can voluntarily withdraw the plat, or we could vote, we could entertain most approved, deny, or table.
Well, I will pull it off, um, and then I will get those questions answered and get the plat revised.
Okay, so let the records reflect that the applicant has voluntarily withdrawn the plat for retention. So before we move on, is there any further discussion on this agenda item that would help the board or the applicant between now and next month? I think my, my main comment would be, work, work, work with Steve, uh, you know, we can address these items specifically, procedurally for the plat.
Yep.
Y'all think these items have nothing to do with, well, one of them does have something to do with easement, uh, but get all these things worked out, uh, if you do press forward with a variance up by glassing at the plat, I don't see how we could approve the plat without the variance, uh, just because it doesn't meet, doesn't meet the regulations for shape, size, you know, too many people on these, several things that were all discussed tonight.
Yep.
Does anybody else have anything related to the five sixteen north port that way?
Thank y'all for answering the question.
Uh, and, and if, as courtesy suggestion, if the applicant could meet with adjoining landowners that may have concerns between now and next month, that might make, make everything go smoother if there is a legitimate reason for the, for the variance. And if any and all landowners that touch you are satisfied with what you're doing, that might make it easier for them to move to the poster.
Okay.
Okay, uh, anything else on that agenda item? If not, we'll move on to discussion items, we have permitted use tables, uh, this is something I've, I know Steve's been working on for several months now. Hey. Hey, Amy did send us out some stuff for review, some other, some other meetings and valleys and cities.
Yeah.
They were rather large, that's why they're not printed out, but I gave you links to them.
Yeah, so they, so, um, everybody's email, there, there is more detailed permitted use tables, I think, was it?
Gallatin?
Gallatin, Spring Hill, maybe, or not, not, yeah, they, yes, a lot larger places, but they, uh, very informational.
Ideas of, um, different businesses that aren't listed on there, and we're here on, like, updating the zoning ordinance so it's easier to read instead of the copy of copies.
Okay.
And, um, in there, there's a few words that are outdated that we might be changing, but I'll get all that together.
And Todd, on the zoning side of it, would the planning commission send this to BOMA?
Yeah.
Is that how that would work?
It, it, it's essentially just a zone, it's an ordinance amendment, like, it just happened to be.
And we would just send it to BOMA with a favorable or favorable recommendation for consideration?
Yeah.
And what we've got before us right now, of course, is a lot better than what we had before, or is this a copy of what we had before?
That is currently what we have.
So this, this is what we have, this is not, this does not have any changes on it?
No, that's what you need to look at and see what changes you would like.
Okay, okay. So if everybody's got that, what we have before us right now is a copy of our current permitted use table. Amy's emailed us a couple of other cities that have a more detailed permitted use table with other uses and maybe more complete use of certain underlying values. I know we've talked about this before, but I, I, I guess what we need to do is we need to have some homework, we need to take this and just go through it, compare it to the other examples we've been sent, uh, and see from a residential side and a business side, see what, um, any suggestions we might have to changes of our permitted use table on our zoning ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think the main thing maybe if you look at where this all started, when we did the corridor rezoning, and even before that, it, there was a lot of rezoning that basically made most of Port Highway, Main Street, B two. And so, if you look at the chart and just focus on what's in B two, you can see that not everything, but a- almost everything's permitted in B two, except for some of the really high intensive things. And as I understood the concern from BOMA's discussion and maybe a little bit of discussion here, is just thinking about what types of uses do you want to see on the main strip? And, and maybe what types of uses do you not want to see there? And, um, again, kind of going through B two and just saying, maybe, maybe we don't want to see a certain, I wouldn't mention the uses, but maybe we don't want to see some of these uses that are currently permitted in B two on Main Street. And any other thoughts that you might have, so.
So, Steve, I know you, y'all, y'all work for a lot of different places, uh, something unique that the county does on the county level, specifically for rezonings, not if there's already a current B two or B three, uh, but on the county level, any rezone in the property has to be accompanied before final reading, it has to be accompanied with a full-blown site plan and use. They will not rezone properties to just simply have another zoning for resale or to have another zoning type for speculation. They, they specifically, if you want to, if you want to build a Home Depot, you come in, on, on R one property, you come in for your rezoning request and ha- and have the site plan approval for your Home Depot or, or, or whatever has part of that approval. If it involves a rezoning, that's, to me, that's seems, seems like smart planning, because to just simply rezone large chunks of property for no purpose, uh, you know, you, you stand a lot more, you, a lot more of a chance of doing something in a floodfront area that may not need to go in a floodfront area, or something like that, but that is something they do on the county level, is for a rezoning, you have to have your use stated, and this is fairly new, but now you have to have your full-blown site plan submitted as part of your approval on the final reading, or the county commission will rezone the property subject to final approval of the site plan by the planning commission. But it looks like we just need to go through this and specifically look over the B one, B two, B three, probably more, probably more B one and B two, because B, B three's centralized, pretty much just a downtown, uh, but look over the B two, B three, and really even the R two, because I know your multifamily and your HPR is becoming a hot, you know, a lot more popular than it used to be, so it could be a special exception, you know, allow more than just a duplex in B two if, uh, you know, if you're on a main corridor or third area.
And that is one thing I, I would suggest taking a look at, is if you look at under residential activities, it's always been the case that, um, residential is not permitted in B two, even though basically the town has rezoned several homes that are on the main street, and we've had issues before where, um, basically that it's a, it's a non-conforming use to live in a house on Main Street because it's now done B two. And so I, I would think you might want to look at amending that permitted use.
To allow.
Yes, resident, continued residential use, or even if somebody wanted to develop, you know, more residential use on Main Street.
Makes you use there.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we got some homework.
It does, one, one thing I wanted to bring forward, mission is that, uh, starting to get a lot of questions about ARB and BBS. And right now, there's no guidance on that, I mean, that's how far with the grants and C's will first approved, I guess.
The, the city of Gallatin, I don't know if it's on the website, they pretty much added a whole, yeah, we're, a whole paragraph to their zoning and subregs relative to ARB and BBS.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, to put something in place on that, because I do see that being a, a challenge coming forward just to manage that.
And I, I assume that would tie in with the permitted use table.
It, it can, yeah, you can limit, um, the short-term rentals to particular zones, yeah.
One or D N.
Right, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions about our homework for next month? Are we gonna do our homework for next month?
I do have a question, though, um, so, so with regards to residential homes on West in, on, on Main Street, wasn't it? Wasn't it that if they were, if they didn't want to change, they could continue to live as if there was no change granted?
They could continue the use for that, but, but that, I mean, that was where all the properties that were, um, rezoned.
Correct.
If they could continue that, but some properties have been rezoned well before that corridor annexation, on, particularly on Main Street from, um, I don't even know what the.
By R two.
Whatever residential, yeah, to B two before that, and we didn't have that provision, because again, we've had people come in wanting to refurbish or build res- uh, homes that are there, and like, saying, like, no, you can't because it's a B two and residential's not permitted anymore, so.
And we also had that come up on, on annexations, because when something's annexed, we just kind of assumed that what was A one in the county becomes R one in the city, but we don't actually. There, there could be some confusion with that as well, over the years with properties that have, that have been annexed, just because it's on the main corridor, if it was in the county and now it's in the city, what is, what does that make it? Stacy, Stacy, do you have a question?
I do, so like, if there is a, a property that's been used as residential, um, and then they sell it, can it still be used as residential?
Yeah, if it's still, but if they changed it and then wanted to change it back.
Right, so like, for instance, my office was changed from a house to commercial, and since it's been commercial, I could change it back, but as long as it continues to use, was residential, it can still stay that way, that's what I want, I just wanted to make sure of that, yeah. Because that's what I have been telling people on my listings, and I just wanted to make sure I wasn't telling the wrong thing.
That's why I was saying, because I was like.
Yeah, you're fine, you're fine as long as the use, in regards to the owner, as long as the use doesn't change, you're fine. But if the use changes, that's when you, you know, you lose your status for a non-conforming, non-conforming use of something.
Thank you.
Anybody got any questions on our permitted use table? Revisit next month for suggestions, additions, deletions. Amy, thanks for all your hard work on it, and some of your email, very insightful. And those are on our A V open cities, so feel free to look over a couple of examples that's sent out. The what? What did you say? Do we have any closer remarks?
Hi everyone.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to talk to the board and put it on record, and this is for the public as well, as mayor, this is the board we put together. I'm happy with this board, I back this board. We can't make everybody happy, I can't help what Al Harp Chapel Hill says, I can't help what Facebook says. As far as people being critical to come in and get the fuss on, I, I don't like that, I'm sorry about that, this happened. As long as I've been at these board meetings, I ain't never seen that happen here personally, not one time. Outside here, very possible, and that's something we need to try to put a stop on. And if there is complaints, I ain't had one phone call, but there's boards that send the complaints, they know where I live, they have my number, and I'll be willing to listen to them. And I've been on this board, I've been off the board, I'm not on this board right now, I'm just here for moral support and to be here. But all the meetings I've controlled and been under and been at, they gave, and I know we do in the board, and when I have my board meetings, we give them more than enough time to speak. I'll go way over everybody that shows up here, because I've been talked to and gotten on to, and I give them way too much time to speak. And I know we have here as well. So I hate that there's people out there who want to come here, but I know most people in Chapel Hill, and generally, they're not scared much of nothing. And they're gonna be here, I've been here when they've been here. So I do wish Al Harp Chapel Hill and Facebook and all that, we can't make everybody happy. I've had complaints outside here, but I've had more people saying, you're doing a good job and doing your best you can. You're not gonna make everybody happy. I'm content with the board, I think they've worked very hard, they go through a lot, they do this on their own time, they're not getting paid for it, it's volunteer. It's not easy to put up with people outside here and people in here. But I personally like the board we got, we've done a really good job in Chapel Hill, our town administrator, we didn't have one for years, he's taken control of a lot of things, and, uh, but if there's any fuss outside here, I'd like them to come and let me know. And nobody should ever be scared to come to that door, if they are, they need to come see me. And as we know, my name's been mentioned, I'm Mike Falkenberry, I'm the mayor of Chapel Hill. And I appreciate everything and every citizen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, that's all I got.
And I'll, I'll, I'll add to that, I believe, uh, most everybody, most everybody in the city would have the ability to find my phone number and all these guys' phone number as well, and I've talked to, probably more so than the mayor, but I've talked to dozens of people about general stuff that's gone on at planning commissions, how we do things, things we've passed, and rumors that people's heard about, larger developments that we have not approved, like we said before, so I, you know, I try to, I don't always answer the call, but if someone will send me a text, I'm more likely to answer the call.
I do want the board to do what she asked to do, though, I would like to publicize it some other way, I do think we could get, it may be hard to do, but if there is a way to get it out there, I do think that's something we should do.
Agree?
Anybody else?
I do like that young lady's statement.
Yeah, if there's a way to do that, I would like to see y'all do that.
Facebook.
Somehow.
Get ahead of it and stop all that stuff.
Because she, she's right about that, there's a lot of things that happen, people don't know, it'd be nice if they did know the truth.
How, how, how do you stop something that's not true? I, I'm just, I don't, I don't.
You don't.
Well, there you go, you don't.
I mean, I'm on Facebook.
But if there's a way they could see it, like this, you know, he's feminine, if there's a way to see it, and I don't know how we could do that again.
I, I think, I think that we can find, that we can be fresh on, but yet courteous, but to the point.
Does the city have a fan page?
Yeah, they believe that they do.
The city has a fan page, I think that you.
The city has a page?
You can visit on it and let them comment.
There you go.
You have a Facebook page that you guys will post the minutes to, might as well just put out something out there. It doesn't hurt.
So additions and amendments, maybe, maybe just state how many lots are on plat, something as simple as that.
Just, you know, there are several people that can see some of the questions that have been asked, um, just see if y'all can debunk, if, if you're saying they're not true, debunk it. People put out press releases all the time, towns do it.
And, and, no, all things may not be true, some things may be, I don't really care about that, just put it out what we do do, and if don't, people come up their own solution.
And don't, don't, you know, as people walk in and sit down, say, fact checkers are here, like, that's not really great.
We have a, a phenomenal public information administrator.
Yeah, it just, not everyone can take the time to, you know, ask for public records for every little thing, so it would just be great to just be transparent.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your comments, always, thank, thank you all for.
And we welcome the public to any meeting that we're at.
Always, always have.
Okay, do we have anything else?
Second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned.